It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this August eighth of two twenty twenty-four city council meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Costner.
Here.
Councilman Nestor. Councilperson Thomas. Councilman Jokowski.
Here.
Mayor Moser.
Present.
Mayor, we have three present and no decorum.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The, um, need approval of the minutes for the previous session of the twenty-fifth. The thirtieth is not currently available. Is there a second?
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion, yes.
To approve.
Well, motion to approve the minutes of the previous session, July twenty-fifth.
Second.
Is there any questions? I would like to point out that, um, Karen has noted that there's a few typographical errors that the AI engine has introduced. I would like to, can we accept those provisionally pending correction?
You can't.
Okay. That would be the motion then. Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on agenda items only.
Ernest Telegraphus. Twenty-nine Rex.
Tell him, Speaker.
Yeah, I'm looking at, um, Mayor's Moser D. on page two. And it should be, uh, studied longer. So, I want you people go forward with table on it tonight. Tony, can you tell me what's the difference between the line, line usage and the fuel that you got?
You want to say that again? Line usage, liquid fuels?
Yeah. What's the difference between the two?
Well, what do you mean, what we could use them for?
Yeah.
Line usage is sewage.
That's it.
Anything that's revived to the sewage or repairs.
And the other one?
Liquid fuels is things that we use for like,
I can't hear you.
Roads. Well, I was thinking something different than that, but I was thinking like salt, uh, stuff like that. Liquid fuels, diesel, gas, things of that nature.
Okay, so going on that definition, how are we for this winter? For salt?
Well, I'm sure we won't get our first supply till probably around end of September or October.
And how much would this supply be?
Usually it's eighty to a hundred, hundred tons.
But last year, what did we use?
It was a light year. Well, it wasn't a light year, actually. I think we, we replenished, if I remember, about four or five times. And that's roughly, uh, we let it down to about, I'm gonna say what, about twenty, thirty tons, if that.
Never less than about a hundred, but.
Yeah.
It holds four hundred tons in a, in a shed.
We don't want to get too much.
Okay, you got any left from last year?
Yeah.
How much?
I'm not exactly sure how much is still left. That could change every day depending on what gets wet, melts, hot.
Okay, so what happens in September, you get so much, then December was short.
We're not short. Every time it drops below a level, the streets department notifies us. Someone on council or notify, or notifies Lois, and she puts an order in.
Okay.
That hasn't changed that way for decades.
Well, I, I don't know. This is a new administration.
Hmm, that, but that doesn't change.
Okay, so, um, I just got a real simple question here for Karen. What's this, uh, Parks Fund?
What are you referring to, Ronnie?
What's this?
What page?
You're asking for money for the Parks Fund. What's that about? And where you spending this at?
Well, those are just, I would guess, just normal parts or supplies that needed to come out of the Parks Fund.
Yeah, but I'd like you people be a little bit more detailed.
They're listed, Ernie, on the sheet that you can pick up.
Yeah, but she should have an idea.
Well.
I mean, you're head in the department, right?
Yes, I do, but I never really see those things until you see them.
Would somebody else, uh, print them up for you?
At the time that people put in a purchase order for things like that, I wouldn't necessarily know what they're for. I see it on the list.
Because it's summertime, and I just want to know where the money's for, for what I, okay.
It'll be on that sheet.
It'll be on the sheet.
Okay.
It'll tell you where everything went.
All right, it was just a question and answer, that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions on agenda items? Hearing none, we'll continue on. Does anybody have any correspondence that they would like to share with the rest of us? Hearing none, we'll continue. At this time, I'd like to ask our solicitor for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Tonight's agenda, you will see an agreement with PennDOT dealing with the viaduct. Council in July passed a similar agreement to enter their construction management system. This is PennDOT's project to do repairs on the viaduct. No cost to the city. You'll see it's contingent with the solicitor's approval. The reason for that is we're waiting for one exhibit, um, that's gonna finalize the scope of the project and what work they're going to do. The engineers are working with PennDOT to complete that. Uh, but the agreement legally is fine operationally. So that's on tonight's agenda. Also in July, council voted to accept the donation of four fifty chestnut to return it to Green Space right above Third Street. No issues on the title search, sent the deed for that property over. There was also a collapsing property on Sixth Street and also a house that burnt down recently on Ninth Street. We worked with the county land bank to get approval to demolish those structures on a quicker and expedited basis. Using some re-abatement procedures, I believe both of those properties have been placed out to bid. Finally, you will see, uh, the PennDOT winter maintenance. This is just the agreement with PennDOT that the city takes care of certain roads that are PennDOT's, um, over the winter. They are compensated for those efforts. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Our city treasurer will have his report at the next meeting. At this time, does our city controller have anything they'd like to report?
No, Mayor. Next meeting, I'll have my report.
Thank you. As you can see, we're a little bit short this, this evening, so I'm gonna go ahead and read my own motions here. First off, talk a little bit about things that are going on in the city right now. First off, Third Street construction is, uh, has begun effective today. They're, they're now in the process of trying to get all the, handicap ramps on all the curbs, um, corrected. Once they'll do that, they'll take care of all the, the manholes and all the storm drains. And finally, they will come in and pave the road. They've kind of indicated that they will always maintain at least one lane of travel, road that can be traveled. So they don't anticipate the complete closure of Third Street. At least that's the current way that they're working. See, I'd like to make a motion to authorize USDA to pay requisition number twenty-two for a total of three hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents, including Phase Three A contractor inside pipe contracting. They're, they're earning three hundred fifty-five thousand, one, ten dollars and thirty-three cents. WEC gives twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars, for inspection and another eight thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars for post-construction, for engineering and post-construction, two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, making up the entire three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. Motion to approve change order number three. This is a, uh, project M O N twenty-two dash oh four for reduction in project cost from three million, seven hundred, or excuse me. Yeah?
Yeah.
That's three million, seven hundred and ten thousand and seventeen dollars to three million, five hundred and twenty-two, four hundred and seventeen and five cents due to changes in pipe fitting apparatus and sizes for the project. What this really is, well, let's get a second.
Second.
What this really is, is pipes that they could not line using their conventional techniques. So they reducing those in the, in the contract. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. Motion D. to approve amendment number six in the Owners Engineering Agreement in the Sewage Collection System Rehabilitation Project Phase Three A in the amount of three hundred fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and zero cents to WEC Engineering to perform additional preliminary design, final design, bidding, construction, post-construction services for additional Phase Three A CIPP lining work throughout the city, additional Phase Three C PPP lining of upper Third Street extension and the new Phase Three D to replace existing segments on pipe, of pipe on Sixth, Sixth Street and Twelfth Street. I would like to make a motion to table this until we get some additional information as to what that three hundred fifty-three thousand dollars is actually going to, to buy us. Could I have a second on the motion to table? Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. That's what that was, was a motion to table.
Okay.
Motion to approve the municipality authority resolution in PennDOT to complete work on the bridge preservation project in the city of Monessen, which will encompass Reed Avenue Bridge over Third Street, project number sixty-four dash seven three oh four dash eight oh one eight dash six zero zero one, pending approval by the solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes. Motion to approve the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Winter Maintenance Service Agreement and Resolution for the Transfer of Winter Maintenance Responsibilities to the Service Provider, the city of Monessen, for designated state highways, state routes, including bridges and approaches subject to pay, and approaches subject to payment by PennDOT under the terms of the agreement and resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Excuse me. Mayor Moser.
Yes. The next one is an item that I want to discuss very quickly. The, uh, city of Monessen webpage is hosted by a third party that, uh, has really held us, I won't say hostage, but they've changed providers several different times. It's caused a couple of different outages. The bottom line, we're paying them five hundred dollars a month to maintain the system, and I think that we can do better than that, to be honest. There's a couple of different things I was looking at. One was hosting it here, but, uh, I started thinking about that. The, the, uh, keeping it maintained, updated and so forth is really not conducive to a good way of doing things. You can actually pay about five dollars a month and have what, uh, hosting done. You have to transfer the website, you have to, to get all the SSLs and everything squared away. This, um, five hundred dollars I'm talking about would be a maximum that we would spend. It would be no more than that. It's probably come out close to about three hundred dollars. But I'd like to turn this into a motion to, to, uh, move the city of Monessen webpage to a web hosting service that specializes in, in, uh, that, that function at a cost not to exceed ten dollars a month for the first year. Is there a second?
I, I, I'm not going to second that. I'm just telling you. And I have my reason.
Well, let's talk about it, yeah.
Maybe you should talk about it before we do a motion, yeah.
That's what the purpose is.
I'm all for saving the money. Now, we talked about this.
Right.
But it doesn't have a description of who's going to host it and for how long are they going to host it and what the cost is they're gonna host it. Now, if we were gonna do this personally ourselves, okay, it's a no-brainer, okay? But we're still using taxpayers' dollars and they need, and they deserve to know who's gonna host it, for how long do we have to enter a contract in with them, or we don't have to enter a contract in with them? And are we supplying the equipment, or are we not supplying the equipment? There's questions that, if I was sitting, wait a minute. If I was sitting out there, I'd ask, be asking those exact same questions and saying, you're not giving any information, you just want to change. I don't disagree with change. We have already talked about that. But we need to be, we need to be detail-oriented to what we're doing as total visibility. So, it's a great idea, yes, a hundred percent. We talked about it, Ron. Love it, no problem at all, but just say, let's just do it at five hundred dollars and let's move it to somewhere else. That don't cut it with me.
What I, what I'm proposing is that we allocate enough money that we can actually investigate the moving of it. What's it gonna cost to back up our server?
But we don't allocate money to say, what's it gonna cost to put gas in a police car or something? We don't allocate that. We have a general fund, and it comes out of the general fund, and we decide, is that cost evaluation worthy taking out of the general fund, or it's not? It's as simple as that.
So I would propose that, that I come up with the detail and we put it in the requisition system and handle it that way.
What I, I think council deserves and everybody deserves to know a couple options. And whether that be GoDaddy or a couple other places that could host us for forty-nine dollars a year. I mean, at that aspect. But I think we need to, uh, uh, again, I have no problem doing it. I have a problem how we're trying to implement it. And I don't think that's fair and right. And I can't, I can't second something like that. So my, my question is, I wouldn't have to go out to bid. It's not that expensive for what we're looking to do, and but I would say, to be honest with you, Ron, my thought would be, or Karen, just go look and find a couple places and get some pricing and all that, just like I did for the truck. Okay, just, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't take a monumental move from Congress for us to do something very small and just figure out what it is. And then I'd say, next meeting, present your findings. And then, and move it from there. And then it's not a problem.
No problem. All right, fine.
Well, GoDaddy's forty-nine dollars a year or something, seventy-nine dollars a year. GoDaddy does hundreds of thousands or millions of websites. They're, we'll put it on TikTok. How's that?
Let's continue on. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Ordantowski, to, uh, Director of Council Finance.
I want to do my report at the end of the month. No, I know, I gotta do mine right now, sorry. Okay. Motion, make a motion to transfer seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars from the general account to payroll account for payroll issues of August first, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
I can't second my own.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund, the amount of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-five cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the ARP Fund, the amount of eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Just like to point out that'll be for the truck that we're gonna receive tomorrow. Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices for the Parks Fund, the amount of six hundred and seventy-four dollars, twenty-six cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Grant Fund, the amount of nine hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the recreational account, the amount of three hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-nine cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the liquid fuels account, the amount of six thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ten cents. All invoices are attached to this attachment F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the line usage account, the amount of five thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment G.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Costner.
Yes.
Councilman Jokowski.
Yes.
Mayor Moser.
Yes.
And these are the following balances in the accounts. American Rescue Fund, sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. Debt Service has one million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and four cents. Fire Esco has twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents. Grant Fund has sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-nine cents. Healthcare Fund has three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Line Usage has six hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventeen cents. Liquid Fuels has eighty-three thousand, five dollars and three cents. Parks Fund has one hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents. Payroll has nineteen thousand, six dollars, ninety-seven cents. Recreation Fund has four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Refuge Account has one hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, twenty-six cents. And the General Fund has seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents. And Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Well, Lois and Nestor are both out, so we'll skip them. Karen, do you have a report you'd like to provide?
I'd like to delay that till the end of the month.
Okay.
And.
Anything else?
Well, I have the, what was on the agenda. One of the items was the rec board, and it's my understanding that we only have two members left. Does that? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's my understanding that we have two members left that, who are on the board, and it's a seven-member board. So it's really critical that we are able to find people who want to serve on this board. And I was thinking, when you look for a board member, what are qualities that you look for? And I was thinking, somebody has to have a passion for that, because it is not a paid position. And when you're on a board, you're asked to give your time, sometimes you give your money. And, um, the experience and the willingness to assist with the various programs in the parks and at the civic center. Sometimes when I think of the rec board, it comes to my mind is the civic center, but it, it's not just the civic center, is it? It's any kind of recreation that could be in Monessens. So I think we're probably gonna have to advertise again, and Mike is working on a job description for these board members. Because I said, a lot of times you get on a board and you don't have any clue what that actually entails. And then we nominate these people, they're on the board, and they're, we're unhappy because they don't perform the way we think that they should. So I think if they're given a job description, then they have to write a letter of intent and maybe even include a resume showing what qualifications they have to be appointed to this board. Because that civic center is really a very unused resource. We have it in Monessens. It's an older building, but I think it has good bones and we could do a lot, a lot with it in the future. So that's what I'm hoping we can, we can get some good people. If you know anybody who's, who you think would fit the bill, please have them call us and, 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 uh, submit a letter to the mail of the, mayor for their intent. Well, I'm, I'm choosing to think it is not a waste of time, because one thing I think about Monessens is what. Oh, well, I think we have a lot of good people in Monessens, and people rise to the occasion if they're asked. I truly believe that. We may not have the money we used to, and, but we have the good people. We just need to find them.
Come on, listen. She's got the floor, she's got the floor. Let her finish.
I hope that's not the case.
That is the case, one hundred percent.
But I know, I'm willing to work with anybody who's willing to put the time in. Well. But you know, we can't go back. I, I can't change anything, but moving forward, we have to think positive. We have to think there are people. And, and I choose to think positive. I choose to think there are people out there who will help us. There has to be. We, we have good people, Ted. You and I both know. We could probably write a list of people who would like to see. So that, that's what I'm hoping will happen. That's why there's elections and then y'all can step up and help. That's what I think. And I had received, moving back, this summer, Teresa Say, who, you probably all know Teresa, has a communities of the care program, and she had student workers at the civic center. She entered into an agreement with the Mont Valley, um, Music Academy. Mark Smith, some of you may know him, I just met him. And he, for five weeks, he had music teachers come in and they, they had drums and they had the recorders and these other instruments and taught the kids a little bit about reading music. And then two weeks ago, I went to one of their little concerts, and it was so cute. You had these football players and they're, they're doing this. Music is so important. And he is willing to come in and find teachers and have music lessons at the civic center. And so he sent a letter, and I'm hoping the next meeting we have, to share this letter with all the council. Well, the school, I'm not saying what should do, he. But they don't now. I can't answer that question.
Don't entertain.
So.
Take it up with them.
That, that may be the truth. Again, I just want to share with you a great plan that Mark had. And Teresa may be able to get these lessons paid for. And. And I. Yeah, the civic center, one of the off rooms, and I know are the biggest thing there are sports and basketball. But wouldn't it be wonderful if there were people in that building and you heard music coming out of those rooms? It would be great. Wonderful, wonderful. And she doesn't, she doesn't give up hope and she thinks it's.
Hey, just, just keep it down.
It's, it's not costing us anything. It's just using our.
Come on. Keep it down, keep it down.
Okay, so that is, that is a possibility. And then we were talking, the main thing that we have to get into control in that building is security, to make sure that the people who are in there, that they're gonna go through Amy to schedule Amy through payments. We met with Guardian Protection this morning. Listen, I.
There are already cameras there. Let her finish, let her finish.
Can I just finish? Let's, uh, if you were talking, I'd be quiet.
Let her finish. Yes, they do. Let her finish.
They do, but we're talking about putting in, um, motion, motion sensors and things like that. Just to try to, because that building is sort of isolated. When you think about nighttime, it's kind of dark down there. Okay. Well, that may be the case, but, but we're thinking our main purpose is to keep that, keep that building secure, that we know who's in there, and if there are people from the outside in there, a city employee, somebody responsible is gonna be on site. Because I always think at the worst-case scenario, somebody falls, they crack their head open, and there's nobody there from the city. How, how do you, how do you protect yourself? So that's what we were looking for. Well, we want to be sure, moving forward, that we have better, a better plan in place. And the, um, hours are gonna be posted on the front of the building. So if somebody comes there, they know they can call Amy for reservations, they know when the building's gonna be open. Just to try to get it, get it situated a little bit better. And I think, I think it's great. I think there's a lot of possibilities. And then, uh, moving, moving ahead, the batting cage, which I stopped on my way home today, and I took a photo of it up at Shawnee. Craig Stark did a beautiful job, I think, in constructing this batting cage. And were you involved, Elmar, in putting the flooring in? And were you involved, Elmar, in putting the flooring in? Again, beautiful, beautiful. I, I have to commend you. And I went there because I just love a job well done, and it is. And then we were discussing the possibility of additional fundraising efforts to put artificial turf on the inside of it and cover it, because that wasn't included in the original grant. And maybe the parents, I talked to Christie this afternoon, and she's gonna put the word out there, and maybe parents will donate, or community members, or anybody in this room who would like to have their little space. But it is a beautiful asset to that park, it's really, he did a great job. And I want to thank everybody who was involved with that process, because I think the girls are really gonna enjoy it. And I think I, there's fall ball, fall softball, Christie told me, I'm learning. So that's all I have. If, you know, if anybody has questions or suggestions, please let me know. Email me, call me, anytime. I'm here Tuesdays and Thursdays. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment directed to myself on any item related to the business, warden visits, statutes, resolutions, or daily work product, and requiring the attention of the city of Manassas.
It's gorgeous. Okay. Will somebody be able to take care of that? Thank you.
Okay. I got four questions. One, do we have any money for road repair? Tony, you said something about art money, how much money's left?
We have sixty-six thousand left in art money, and it's nice that you bring that point up, because I was, I'm going to make, I've been doing some checking online, and I'm gonna make a recommendation to council that we spend the remaining sixty-six thousand dollars on some type of road repair. Whether it be potholes, whether it be some...
It's terrible.
It's not gonna be getting a paver in here, grinding it down, and doing it like we all would love to have. But there's, there's equipment out there that does hot patch, and I would like to make sure that we can make that, rest of that funds are used for that matter.
Yeah, because they're getting bad, very, very bad. Okay, now, you see what happened in Elizabeth? When they knocked down the dam, and it went down three to four feet, the boats got stuck. Now, they applied for a federal grant. Is Manassas applying anything for the boat launch? Because that isn't stable either, and with the water being lower, it's gonna do a lot of movement there. So what are you guys doing for... Yeah, I, I know, so what are you guys doing to repair this?
We are looking at some possibilities for that.
Well, we're gonna have more than possibilities.
Well, that's all you got right now, is we're looking at different ways to get it funded. What are you talking about? What are you talking about?
There was a guy that approached the city, or city council, to get some additional stone taken further out. He was turned down. I was just told by that today at the senior senate.
I know nothing of that. Let him finish, and you can talk about that, but I don't know nothing of that. Go ahead.
Yeah, I figured you wouldn't know anything about it, where you could help something out, which would help if you're, I'm not a fisherman...
Well, I've gotta know about it before I can help out.
Okay, so, number three. Where are we with the knocking down buildings? How many buildings we got slated for this year to be torn down?
Total, there's probably about two hundred of them that are, that are scheduled to go already.
Okay, but how many's gonna get done this year?
Probably over a hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty buildings are gonna go down?
Yes.
Who's paying for a hundred and fifty?
All, not through the county. They've still got several million dollars left, and that's not our... That's right. This is all the county money. We have nothing in our budget. This is the county budget that's doing that. They, they did not, they never gave us an X number of dollars. What they said is they would demolish three hundred and fifty homes in the city of Manassas.
By when?
By before they run out of money.
Well, there hasn't been no three hundred and fifty homes.
They're halfway there, better than halfway.
So you're saying over a hundred and seventy-five homes have been torn down in Manassas?
They were, by the end of this year, they'll be closer to two hundred.
Okay, and the other thing is, who's in charge of the, trying to get federal funds to repair the lock?
That's all of us, but there are several different things we're working through, D C, D, the state, and the federal funds to do that. Part of the problem, to be real honest with you, is the boat launch is actually in Ross Raver.
Yeah, but you guys...
Well, let me finish. The boat launch is in Ross Raver. So when the, the feds came in to do the, the locks, they went to Ross Raver and said, what, what, what all kinds of launches do you have? Ross Raver didn't think about this, because we own the boat launch. It's in Ross Raver, but we own it. So they got money to fix all the, the boat launches in Ross Raver. It wasn't until they were knocking down the Elizabeth Dam, that we went up to them, they even invited Manassas to the table.
I know, you went through it.
They invited Manassas to the table, and we said, what about our lock that we have, our, our boat launch we have here? And by this time, they said, we have no money left.
If they do the same thing to transfer from Ross to, to Manassas, that they did at the high school when they, when they built that back in nineteen fifty-four.
Right.
And they did the same thing on the boat launch. Hard to believe, but...
Anyway.
Okay, one last question. This is for the council of... This, dark, when's it gonna be dark?
The duck? I think PennDOT intends to start construction in twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five?
And want all the agreements and everything done by the end of the year.
And is this gonna be a, a one year, or more than a year?
They haven't given us...
Yes.
Yes, the city will be responsible for the maintenance as they are today.
Okay, so what if they stop interaction of one neighborhood on one side and the other? Are they gonna reimburse any businesses?
Reimburse businesses?
Yeah.
Look, that, that has not, the construction phase of this has not been planned yet. Whether there's gonna be detours or anything else, they're gonna be in conjunction with, they're gonna make those decisions in conjunction with the city.
Is the city gonna make a stand, or make sure that...
The, the city needs to get the bridge fixed, Ernie.
Okay, but, but to compensate the neighborhoods, they're gonna get detoured for over a year.
We don't even know what the detours are, as of yet. The fact that the bridge is getting repaired by PennDOT through federal funding is a huge win for the city.
Yeah, well, you see what happens in Pittsburgh when they go...
Yeah, that bridge, that bridge collapsed.
Yeah, but it, it, these people got compensated, the ones that got on both sides, because there was no traffic anymore, and their businesses went down.
That bridge collapsed.
Well, there's businesses on both sides?
Where?
Well, you got some pizza joints, you got...
It was shut down before, because kids were off the bridge way back about forty, fifty years.
Yeah, but it wasn't for a whole year, was it?
It was shut down for a couple of years.
Couple of years, yeah? That's what it's about, questions and answers.
Thank you.
Ted Harhi, Helen Avenue. My first thing is, is that, did you do the contract with R B S, and you're not gonna do Urban Design Ventures that got us grants and was steady and reliable all the time? And number two, on that same issue, is the grant that they got for C D B G, Urban Design Ventures, was roughly about three hundred and forty thousand. Did we get that into the city?
It was three hundred and seven thousand dollars, and yes...
So it dropped down from three forty to three...
It was never three hundred and forty.
At, at one time it was.
Maybe, but every year it fluctuates.
That's okay.
This year it was three hundred and seven thousand dollars allocated through Harris.
What are you gonna do with the money?
There will be a public hearing held in the next few weeks here to...
Can people make recommendations?
Absolutely, that's what it's all about.
The next thing is, we've received no money from the state senator yet, two years, and we've received no money from Eric Demans, other state rep, that you and Joe Delfonso had much whipped down there, and told him that you had his back, by the way, I remember that. I found my notes from the health center, which I don't want to discuss now, but I can in the future. Are we gonna get any grants from these guys?
Yeah, watch this budget cycle, Ted.
Is it, I mean, are they waiting for election, or are they gonna do something for us?
Once the budget passed a few weeks ago. Watch.
And that's why I said the last, not the last meeting, the meeting before, because I didn't get an opportunity at the last meeting. This Act Forty-Seven thing is definitely not on the table. We're not even close to that. But I looked, and I found in my notes, I was looking for the health center thing, because I wanted to answer when Ron said, what does that have to do with anything? I have the answer, what it had to do with anything, with shutting down the health center. Matter of fact, let me say that real quick. Chris Sansoussan Siran said several years ago that he has heard, and this is why he's not doing anything at the health center, he has heard that there's gun violence, shooting, murders, and drug overdoses, and then he goes on and on, and paraphr, I don't want to paraphrase the rest of it, but he wasn't gonna do anything. Did he get a lot of money when the, the water line broke upstairs and ran for the weekend?
Yeah, it's some insurance money.
About a million, too?
I don't know what the number was.
You said he was heavily insured, so...
Yeah.
That's you told, it's immaterial who you told. Buzzzy Byron is still not registered as a licensed with the state. I looked it up today, and we're still paying him for being not registered. Does he figure he doesn't have to do it? You have Des Sac.
Des Sac is not registered either.
You, you've got, yeah, they're all there.
No.
Billy Hands.
Really, not as, not as a plumbing, not in the plumbing.
Well, Donald Buzzzy Byron is not.
Yeah, the fact there's nobody in Manassas that is.
He seems to make out. He made out on a one-dollar property that the redevelopment authority gave him a while ago, and just sold it for thirty-four thousand, when he was supposed to build a building on it years ago, never happened, but I guess it's him. That's the double standard of Manassas. Bill Brown Plumbing, Mirabella, Carmelo, Hands.
And are those, if you look at that, they're not in category thirteen, which is plumbing.
And there's another one, too. Pat, I'm not Pat, I'm sorry. Retract, patent electric. Glenn Godler. Anyway, Ron's Plumbing and Electric. But anyway, they have the ability to do it. And secondly, we could save a quick fifty thousand. We're paying a code enforcement officer that's not certified, and the previous guy who made fifty thousand dollars, that's what we pay him, right? Fifty grand?
We do not.
What are we paying?
Our current code officer? It works out, but our current code officer earns about twenty-four thousand a year.
Okay. I thought it was fifty thousand dollars is what I saw in the la, I went through one of the previous...
There's two people.
Yeah, but neither one of them has, the, the previous guy had eighteen certifications. This guy has none. He's not legally apt to go into the health inspection or whatever.
That's inaccurate. Marvin...
How is he?
More, I'm, I'm gonna explain it to you.
Okay, I'm asking!
I'm gonna explain it to you.
You don't have to be a smartass about it.
You know what, I'm, go ahead, continue.
You know it all, go ahead. I'll listen, I'll listen.
I got a law degree to interpret the law, but for you, I'm not doing it. Continue. Go ahead. Eh, tough. I got nothing to say. I don't care what your opinion, I don't care what your opinion is.
Okay, Maveracus's yard sign between Third and Second Street.
It has nothing to do with, this has to do with business that we have, and resolutions that we have control over, that we have no control over that.
Over what?
Anything that Marak, Maveracus has done.
You run the city, and you run the redevelopment authority. You do this all the time.
No, we do not run the redevelopment authority. It is an authority.
That's right, and they report to you, because you have an interaction with, don't act like you don't have an interaction with it. But anyway, he's got a yard sign, which is illegal, there's gotta be a big sign, similar to the one you have across the street here, that has the USDA with your name and all that on, only this one is a redevelopment authority. He can't put a yard sign and his own phone number on it, and run the redevelopment authority into the ground. That's why we're paying all this money, or PennDOT's gotta come in and fix that by duck. I got five hundred thousand bucks in a grant, he turned down the money. I got five hundred thousand to fix the parking garage, he turned down the money. It's not a pat on the back, it's not, I'm the greatest in the world. What are you, what are you doing, letting him run the show? He illegally put himself on the redevelopment authority. He's terrible.
This is all before me, so I really...
Let's go back, okay. Ninth Street Park, I have a lot of respect for the fact that it's a veterans' thing. I helped to coach Tony Madison when he was a kid, great kid. He was a young man, Anthony Madison, that's all fine. I'm gonna yield it over to Karen here. I went up to Ninth Street Park, and look, there's not one, one tree in the center of that walking track, nothing to, to obstruct the vision of that beautiful mural, nothing. Go up to City Park, we're not doing anything up there at all. They planted seventeen trees, I've mentioned it to you, mentions to Mark Lor, who gave me smart aleck answers. Why would you put them all in the center of the track? Secondly, we got two boxes that hardly anybody ever uses at any time, and the little girls, about fifty of them, are cheerleading up there. Now they, they, they can't, because you have two boxes, that you were advised, and I know for a fact you were advised, don't put them there, put them on the side, but you insisted to put them in there. Can we ever get those out of there, so that it can be a nice, open oval, like Marty Dudus had planted? And are we gonna have to name the park after Marty?
I don't know what you're talking, what boxes are you talking about?
The two electrical boxes you put in the center of the, the infield, that are unsightly, not needed, whatever. The Ninth Street Park...
There was always two outlets in that for as long as I...
Not inside that park, not inside...
Inside the park, there was always two...
Not inside where you put them.
The exact same place, exact same place. Exact same place. All we did was put them in closures to make them safe. I'm sorry, but they were there.
They were there, Ted.
Secondly... There were never any electrical...
They're absolutely...
Were there electrical boxes in the center of that oval ever, in your lifetime here?
There was...
There were eight tents there, or seven tents there one day, and nobody was plugged into it. Not one person was plugged into it.
That's not my fault.
Well, it's your fault that the box is there, they don't need them. That's the point. The other thing is, can we do something to start working on, on behalf of Marty Dudus, who put a ton of effort and money and everything into it? You're gonna name the park after him, correct? And when does that happen? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, I thought you had it planned already, or do you have it in the workings or anything like that? But they got, you know, split rail fences, he's repaired at times. You have three tennis courts up there that were changed into batting cages and deck hockey. You have the one over the hill, I mean, there's pickleball courts that be, had, and whatever. Recreation money is the easiest grant to go after in the state. No grant is easy. But Mike will agree with this, he should, that the recreation grants are the easiest ones to go after, to, to get some money and funding. Why don't we work on the city park a little bit and help out? And I've got a slew of other things, but I'll let it go. Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Pina. C N Florida, forty-five more trade. I'd like to have something cleared up in my mind. You got two people who are in charge, Karen, you and those numbers are in charge of the park and recreation? Is that what I get?
That was the streets.
You were in park. It, well, I, he sent a dumbass letter to the group that I belong to, that's the garbage authority, and when I look at the name of the people, how they're, what they're doing, it's right there. Reverend's letterhead. She's a director, and you're a director. And to me, you know, I felt there was only me one. Either you or her.
She's streets, on parks and public places.
Your park?
And public places.
Streets and public improvements.
And park?
Public improvement.
Improvements?
It doesn't say park?
No.
I've never seen that.
I've never seen that, Pina.
I have to look it up, I guess. But anyway, on the street side, where they're doing Third Street right now, right? Morgan, that says, the company that is doing it, doing all the corner?
Right.
And there's sidewalks on that corner, that's where they closed the, the steps going up to the, the old nipper.
Right? Which are closed.
Now, nothing to do with you guys on the street department, because you guys doing the best job you can with the people you got. But after they do that cement job on that side, who's gonna take care of those streets? Because those streets are nothing but grass. When are you gonna clean them up?
Which streets are you talking about?
Third Street.
Third Street is gonna be completely repaid from Schoonmaker to Third Street. The sidewalks are...
When are you gonna have to, when are you gonna hire somebody in City Hall to dedicate themselves to do the sidewalks? In any place, I'm just going Third Street, but any place in Manassas.
If you drive down Schoonmaker, I drive it every day, and you can't even see the sidewalk or the telephone pole. If you drive down Scoon Maker, I drive it every day, and you can't even see the sidewalk or the telephone pole. There's this clumps of glass, and then you see people who live there, there's no grass.
I agree.
Then you have a big hump of grass. So is that Pendott's job to do that?
Nope.
So while you guys are concentrating, I think Mrs. Palmer told me from Reed Avenue to Bydett, to where she lives, he says, "They're great, they're good there." I told her to go to the Nizaki side, on the other side, see how good it is. Or go on the other side of Reed Avenue and see how good it is. Okay, Manassas look like shit. Okay, that's all I can tell you. On that end. So you guys need to clean up the sidewalks so people can walk on it. And this disgrunted citizen of Manassas, because that's where I am, that's what the new, that's what the fake newspaper said, I'm not disgrunted. I want everything the Manassas people want. They want the pothole fixed, they want the sea, the streets redone, they want things that look good, not that looks like somebody has bad teeth, that there's empty. I went to Denora, I went to Shawroy, just right here, they're doing sidewalks. They got it downtown, we got shit. We got buildings that are tearing down. That's what Manassas people want, what I want.
Me too.
Okay, no, you don't want. You concentrate and kiss the wrong people's ass, that's what you're doing. Number two, number two, let me finish.
Quit with insults.
Listen, you throw me out at Goddamn Timey One Two, I'll be back, okay? I want to you, Tervey, very clear. And if you don't understand what I'm saying, please ask me. I want all the bill from the law firm that I fought so worse, and I want all the bill up to date from the beginning of the year till now.
Then you need to do a right to know.
All of them, yes.
Do a right to know.
Yes.
That's all. I mean, then-
But I want all of them. I don't want them to come back and say, "Well, we didn't understand what you said."
Then make sure you state that.
Make sure you put it on the re-
Then make sure you state that in the right to know, that's all.
It is the right to know.
No, what I'm saying is just make sure you state that, so there's no misunderstandings.
Is there a misunderstanding?
Put it in writing.
Well, put it in write, well, I do it as a teacher, they teach me how to write.
That's the right to know request.
You gotta do a right to know.
Do I have to put, I'm asking you.
You have to put it in a right to know request, quite honestly.
Okay, I'll do it for you. You got a problem. Not for you, I do it for the citizens of Manassas.
Thank you.
But you ain't, you ain't part of Manassas.
Thank you.
You know, you're part of the gone out of here, okay? That's what I think we need to have done. The sidewalks to be done. The, the, to me, the park, you know, one side of the park looks good, the other side of the park looks like crap, okay? The other, the other part of town looks good, the downtown looks like crap. And let me ask you a question. I seen Morgan this morning doing a great job, by the way.
Mm-hmm.
I'm standing there behind his car and I wonder why I moved. Where is your police department when they, they're working on all those corners, and at the same time-
They're responsible for traffic management.
Say that again?
Morgan is responsible for the traffic management, not our police.
Oh, you mean, so if people going into-
That is part of the contract.
Let me finish, okay? So if people going inside to pick up their goodies, because today they were passing out food, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's Morgan's responsibility?
They're to, to direct traffic where they're working.
Are you saying to me that it's Morgan's responsibility?
To direct traffic where they're doing construction.
For their job, not for directing traffic that's going in to pick up food.
If they're obstructing that, then it's their responsibility.
They're not obstructing, I understand, you seen it, it's right by your building.
So what's the question?
That's the question. Don't you, you have a cop there.
We only got two officers on duty.
Hire more.
With what?
Oh, that's right, you, one of them quit and was sent to Thomas Jefferson, and they threw him out of Thomas Jefferson, you guys, we hired him, right? Right?
Right.
It wasn't good enough for them, so we took it. All I'm saying to you, you need to hire, because if that, that little thing that I seen today, that's bull.
Right now, our police budget, and first off, our police are doing an excellent job. Police are budget running, what is it, one point two million a year? Out of one point two million dollars a year we spend on the police, out of a four million, million dollar budget. Now, you take the parks and you try to fix a few roads, the money goes really quick. We pay one point two million dollars to the police department.
So you think that that's good enough then?
No, I'm just saying that that is the biggest part of our budget.
So you got all those legislators and all these, and all the senators, that they give you zero cash, right?
We're trying to get as much as we can.
No, they're, they give you zero cash, they buy you lunch to the same old place, that's all they do, take you out to lunch, and that's about it. But we don't get nothing. So for Manassas citizen, the taxpayer, the good taxpayer of the Vanessa, what they want is real simple. Good street, the place looking decent, have a redevelopment authority, no a fake redevelopment authority. Spend the money that you need to spend for the city and the childrens of Manassas, not eight thousand some dollars given to the firework for that one day, half hour, to one of you buddies. Let's do that for change, and then Manassas will be a better place to live. But right now, Manassas is terrible. Denora passed it, Manassas. The mayor, and you just like to lie. I gave you a piece of paper, the beginning of the month, for the garbage authority, and he signed it when I brought it here. Thirty-one days later, at six nineteen, you send an email to them saying that you need a more time. Who are you bullshitting? Who are you bullshitting? And here, go talk to the other three men.
Linda Lacy, Maple Avenue. My question is directed to Karen. Um, actually, what you discussed this night, tonight, with this music program, it's a great idea, but why don't you have Manassas High School hire this person that you're talking about and put a music department back in our school? We don't need a separate department for mu-, we need it in our school. We are the only school in this, in the valley that doesn't have a music department, doesn't have a band. That shows, that tells me a lot about our city, but yet and still, every time the school wants to raise their taxes, they're allowed to do so. So what are they raising our taxes for if they're not giving our kids a quality education?
Salary.
We're paying for their retirement, their, their cost of living raises, all that. So what are they giving our kids? I understand that what you just said was great, but it should be in our school system, not in our civic center. That should be a practice place for them. Not a learning place. If they should be learning that from the school. And as long as I can remember, we've always had a band. And it's, to me, it's pitiful. And you, and the city of Manassas ought to be ashamed of our high school. Oh, and there's one other thing too, and, um, I think Mayor answered that question about the sidewalks on Scootymaker. So when you leave there, you drive down Scootymaker-
I am very aware of that.
Going towards the gas station.
Yeah, I know.
And you'll see it.
I've walked those myself. I understand exactly what you're saying.
And there's something I wanna discuss with Lois about this. How come, it's not gonna work this year, but next year, I'm gonna say this publicly. Next year, the city should get a grant and put some sixteen to eighteen-year-olds together and give them a summer job program to do that. That's what they used to do. I mean, you, there's no, to, to me, it's just that-
That's actually not a bad idea.
You're not showing no pride for our town at all, and every day it gets worse and worse. And we're paying for it. Our taxes are extremely high. I bet you, if I did research, I bet you our property taxes in Manassas is higher than anyone in the valley. And we have nothing to show for it. We have no downtown, we have no craft stores, we have nothing.
Okay, thank you.
So you need to think about that. Like I'm saying, we don't went through seven comprehension plans. I do not wanna go through another one, because to me, it's just basically nothing.
Thank you.
Just one thing about streets, sidewalks. We got a big eyesore at that haunted house. Did you see Castle Blood?
Yes.
The, the walls are falling down, we got weeds coming up, and that's supposed to be a business? And it's going into Halloween, what, like that?
Come in and talk to Marvin about it, and he'll, he can maybe address that.
Well, you, you should tell him, because we pass that up all the time. Nobody does nothing about it.
No, but they can correct me about my property, so.
I can tell you something about that.
What's that?
Because I was, happened to talk to Ricky on, uh, online yesterday and today about something totally different. He informed me that he has gone through personally some very major medical issues, to the point where dialysis, he had some kidney stones, he came very close to, uh, almost seriously dying. He was to the point where he ballooned up to, he said, he told me in a text, it was two hundred and seventy-five pounds, and then he was on some diuretics and he dropped weight. Apparently, he's had some issues. And he knows about the grass. He's been cited by Ma- Marvin about the grass.
Oh, yeah?
He, even his personal grass, he's not proud of it. He needs to get back up and feeling better to be able to take care of his situation.
You can't hire anybody?
And he said, he, apparently, and I don't go into people's business or what they make, but he said it's been a, he, he's claimed it as being a difficult year. So maybe he wasn't able to do some of the things that Castle Blood does during the course of the year because of his ailment, and he didn't have the funds to do that. I'm sorry? Well, he's not a city employee.
Who are we talking about?
Who are you talking about?
Castle Blood.
We're talking Castle Blood. Castle Blood, why would we pay their insurance? It's a private business.
We're not, we're not talking about, I'm talking about Castle Blood.
Pay attention.
So, he's had some issues, so he very much wants to work them out and get them taken care of, but you, we all know, if you get sick and you go down, you know, unless you have a strong family or have a lot of people that can help you, that's not possible, so he's doing the best he can.
Well, he, he already got like less than a month to get ready for Halloween.
Well, again, again, he's doing the best he can. That's all I could say to him. I spoke to him by, online today, so he's doing the best he can.
Was he full, not, was he full-time down there?
Yes.
Did he have insurance coverage or?
Oh, I don't know, Ted. I have no idea. I mean, that's the-
I'm in, I'm in the city.
No, no.
Not a city function. It's not a city function. We're not talking about-
Yeah, stop, stop the other thing. We're talking about something else totally different that Ernie asked the question.
No, he didn't, yeah, he didn't catch the second one, but I know.
Can I ask a question about the civic center? The young man is there, he's sick, right?
Right, that's pretty sad.
Does he have any insurance policy through Manassas?
No, he's a part, he's a part-time employee.
Part-time.
Don't you think it's a full-time job that you give?
It's a part-time job. It's always been a part-time job.
We, we tell the people that one of the part-time employees is-
You got the floor right now.
Okay, just one last question. Since those sidewalks, he doesn't own the sidewalks, the city does. Why doesn't the city do it?
You're responsible for the sidewalks in front of your property.
Oh, so that includes everything?
Yep. Thank you. Any other comments? Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.